Thank you. Really, the purpose of tonight's effort is to award the bid so that the project can be completed in a timely manner. A couple of things that certainly you may want to discuss are some of the proposed deductions and possibly some of the financing. But the recommendation is as follows. Superintendent recommends approval of the base bid at fifteen million, seven hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred dollars with the reductions noted at two hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars plus bid alternate number six, which was a zero-dollar add, and that was for train equipment and controls as a preferred alternate, as provided by Beam Construction Company, for a total sum of fifteen million, five hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and six dollars. The superintendent recommends pursuing additional funding sufficient to reinstate some of the items removed above to the contract, plus provide a three percent minimum project contingency from the Board of County Commissioners at a future meeting. And be certainly happy to take on any questions.
Okay. I would imagine somebody's going to have some questions about the VE list, but let me make sure everybody's clear what we're doing. We have the funding available to let the contract, but what we have to do is use furniture or technology or something else. So, the total budget is short. We're working on the VE number to close the gap, but we know that we're going to go back. We have funding to go back. The commissioners have been told, the county manager has been told, he is aware that we've got a VE list that we're working on. In fact, we sent him a copy of the list for information purposes, so he would kind of have a general idea of what we're looking at. So, that being said, we'll start with Dr. Phillips. Do you have any questions or comments?
Well, just as a reminder, when we met last month, it looked like we were about a million dollars too high for the total project. We were at like twenty point five million, and we had or were hoping to have nineteen point five. So, it looks like we've managed to cut out about twenty-five percent of that million-dollar shortfall with the value engineering. Am I reading that right?
Certainly, certainly the reductions did go towards the direction that we wanted it to go to.
One important point, and you may be looking at the financial document on the bottom where you're looking at that eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar number, that shortfall. There's a couple of notes at the bottom that I would call your attention to. The amount, the very bottom note, the amount that's needed does not represent the funds that will be necessary to complete the project. No contingency has been provided in this calculation. The purpose of tonight's meeting and the calculation provided is to award the bid so that the project can be completed timely. In addition, the Board of Education paid ninety-five thousand dollars of architect fees for this project from its fund balance, on which we will request reimbursement. So, there are several things that are not calculated in that number. That number only allows us to let the bid tonight, and that's assuming that you guys will not change the value engineering. You may pull some out, you may add, you know, you may do some things. This is just a starting number. So...
Let me interject one quick thing. The total list was nine-something? I mean, we told them, hey, here's what we want to get, and we got them. So, there was six hundred items that, as a committee, we decided those were things we did not want. You know, less of a specification on the roof or shorter timeframe on the roof was one. I can't remember, you know, but there were items on there that we said, no, we won't accept. You know, that's what the contractor gives you a list, and you accept some and you reject some. So, these were the, this is the list of items that we thought were, we wanted to recommend as for acceptance on our part to reduce the amount. Does that make sense?
Okay. Well, I don't have any objection at all to the items on the list. They look like they were fairly cosmetic for the most part. But what the concern I have is making a commitment to build a building when we don't have all the money. But I guess in a worst-case scenario, if the county commissioners, present company accepted, exempted, tell us to go pound sand when we ask them for eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars more after already asking for two million more, I guess we found out in our first presentation this evening that we do have a fund balance that would cover that if, you know, we can't get the money anywhere else. And I know you don't want to say that's what we're going to do, but I don't want to, I don't want to write a check that I can't cash.
So, certainly, if we are, if we find ourselves in that position, the first thing we'll do is we'll meet and we'll discuss what the options are, what the priorities are, and we'll go from there.
But you're telling me it's not, this is not a hypothetical scenario that we might be short? We are short.
That's correct. For the construction budget, yes.
And we still, and we still don't know how much the state's going to ask us to have to put up for the Highway seventy-three intersection, correct?
That is still an unknown, yes.
So, that could be another check that we have to cash here in a minute.
I'll interject some other point there. The commissioners are well aware that that may be a state requirement and that, you know, we don't pay for that because we don't, we don't get money. So, they're fully aware that if that request comes, it's coming to them. It's not coming to us. Does that, I mean, only because they hold the money. We don't have it. So...
Thank you. I'd like to address Dr. Phillips. Dr. Phillips, our capital account fund balance is about three hundred thousand, if you'll recall the financial presentation. So, that would be the dollars that we have that are available for a capital outlay expenditure, and that's what this is. The other dollars that we talked about, those are operating dollars, and that's the way those dollars are allocated and intended to be spent, and that's what we should spend those dollars for. Otherwise, spending them for other things are cheating our teachers, our staff, our students. And so, those should not be spent on anything other than operating. It is the county's responsibility and obligation to fund our buildings, and we should not take no for an answer. There are options, and so if the county tells us no, then I would expect to come back to this board, and we can cut six classrooms out. That's not an option that we gave you for value engineering because we don't think that that's an option. But if the county tells us no, then we come and we cut six classrooms, and guess what? In two years, we're going to come back, we're going to double the cost, and we're going to ask them for the money again. No, sir. I'm not going to write a check that I can't cash, but I'm not going to spend operating money. I'm not going to recommend to you that we're going to spend operating money on a capital expenditure that's not, that's not our responsibility to do.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other question, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Schu?
I just wanted to comment. Ms. Klutz, you did an excellent job on your explanation there. I just wish more people understood that, you know, that we don't want to mix up our responsibilities. The capital money is for capital projects. Operating money that we have in our fund balance is in our general operating fund, and this money was derived from operating efficiencies, nothing to do with the local money. This is state money through operating efficiencies, and it should only be used for the operation of the school. Now, I know that we did have to take money. I'm not sure where we took the ninety-five thousand from to pay the architects.
Capital.
So, it came from the capital, and obviously, since that's a capital expense, we should ask, you know, that be replaced back to that. Because you think about it, you know, and Chuck, he's here, when he has a breakdown and it's something that's not on his list, then he has to have a pool of money to pull from to fix things. And so, you can't deplete your capital reserves there to zero, and then when something happens, you have to leave it broke until you get a funding source, which is the commission. And you can't wait thirty days till they have their meeting to ask for more money. You have to do it right then. And at that time, you have a choice. Let it stay broke and not fixed for thirty days, you know, or go to the commission in thirty days. So, either way, you know, but you don't want to, you don't want to cross-mix your money, though, Jeff. That's pretty much a standard rule. You can't, you can't change the funds around like that. They have to go to what they're designated for. I do have one real quick question for you, Dave, on the value engineering. When we're talking about eighteen thousand reduction on the roof there, going from a sixty-millimeter PVC to sixty-millimeter TPO, what kind of variance on the warranty are we talking about? Because you know the trouble that we have with these flat roofs anyway.
Okay. The roofs, these roofs will be low-slope roofs, and so we have the TPO or, this is going to TPO. The other roof is the standing seam metal roof. The warranties are the same between the PVC and the TPO.
So, this is the difference between a metal roof?
This is the difference between a PVC roof, which is a membrane roof, and a TPO roof, which is also a membrane roof. It's just a different type of membrane.
Okay. So, we're not talking about changing from metal to something else?
The metal is still there.
Okay. Well, that's good because I think that obviously metal roofs cost more upfront, and, but when you look twenty years from now, twenty-five years from now, I probably, surely probably won't be here, but somebody's going to say, well, you know, everybody uses metal roofs. They've been using them for the last thirty years. How come they didn't put these on the schools? And so, we don't want that to come up for some other people's boards after us to have to be replacing roofs because we didn't do it right to start with.
This board actually was very clear that they wanted metal roof on this project.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, as an ongoing, a suggestion for the boards, this board and ongoing boards, you know, is to continually try to pursue metal roofs because it only saves money down the road. And like this way to say, fix it now or fix it later, so we can fix it now by doing the right thing. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Schumaker.
Well, I appreciate this list, and I know that it was extensive as we went through it to try to allege, you know, assess our exposure on some of the items, because some of the items really did expose us to lesser-quality materials and would reduce the building life from the fifty years that we're probably going to get out of this building to something a little bit less. And then some components aren't quite that long. But there is still something that we're looking at on the side, and it is not included in this, and that, and when we talked with the commissioners in our mediation, we talked to them about the fact that we did have a pricing for the thermo, help me.
Geothermal.
Geothermal, yeah, thank you. For the geothermal option and the LED option. And Dave is still pursuing that information now to see if we can find a private, public relationship that may be able to fund those options for us, so we won't have to do them. But at the same time, Mike Downs and his team were very engaged about that particular option because of the potential for saving money down the road, and we want to save as much money for the future taxpayers as we possibly can, and this would be definitely an avenue to follow. You know, the ROI on this was, well, the NPV on this came back to about twelve to fourteen years, but we could probably do better if we could get the private companies to invest with us where they could get the tax breaks and actually lessen the ROI to about six or seven years. So, those are options. So, that's still out there. We've got about sixty days beyond the approval of this contract before we have a drop-bid date where we can't execute that option. So, it is alive and well. We could be coming back to this board to say, look, we would like to do this option. Here's what we've got, and then this board would have to buy off on it or not buy off on it. But, so we do still have a little bit of time before that takes place. But I just wanted to keep that in front of you, that we have not, with this, eliminated those options, so we still have LED lights and the geothermal options available to us at least for sixty more days after we approve this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter?
Y'all must have did some real changing around because first they had to pay back at thirty years.
No. Barry's the one looking at the geothermal.
No, no, I was using a thirty-year project life, but the ROI and the NPVs were coming back to around somewhere between fourteen and eighteen years, depending on what kind of interest rates you were using, what kind of inflation rates you were using.
Well, they gave, gave it, it said payback first thing, said thirty years payback. But anyway, I'll get the information. One of the things I was curious about, did they, when they were doing this value engineering, did they show any of, say, deleting some windows or anything like that? Because I know that a lot of times, if, I know you want to have windows to have your natural lighting and all this type thing, but two, there's a good and bad side to both things. Because, you know, you look at some of your schools now, I always think of Central. That's one of the perfect examples because I know all the caulking, all the things we've done, and you look at especially some of your older schools, because for a while there, everybody were putting in windows so they could get the natural lighting and everything. But then when you go now to have to repair them, to caulk them and all this thing, it's a disaster. But was that something we looked at, to use less windows so we didn't have to pay that much? Was that one of the options we looked at?
Sure. And one thing I want to make sure everybody understands, really the value engineering effort, you know, really took place several months ago before we went to bid. What the effort that we've been going through now is really the reductions. And to answer your question specifically, windows were not, reducing the number of windows or eliminating windows was not, was not, was not offered, was not priced. And you hit the nail on the head, really. It's, there's several things, you know. The natural lighting is, is a good thing that we are pursuing. It is something that we do strive for, and it is, also works into energy savings on lighting. So, it was, to answer your question, no, it was not one of the items that was offered by the contractor.
Do you have the list in front of you, the things that we did not accept?
I do not.
Carpenter, I thought maybe that would be beneficial if you heard at least a sample of some of those, if you had it, but go ahead.
Yeah, that, I was just curious because, like I say, it can be a double-edged sword because then, I mean, you've got your natural lighting, but then too, you know, it can cause, you know, when, after years, then too, you've got the problem where, yeah, you get the natural lighting, but then after ten, fifteen years, then you get the problem where then you're, you know, you can have energy loss because then you got to start caulking, you got to start doing the things, and then when you get the problems like we have now where we know we're, we're having the problems with maintenance, that's when you start having the problems. So, that was, that was one of my questions with that.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter?
You mentioned the value engineering prior to the bid. Help me to understand again, we asked the county commissioners for twenty million, and it was nineteen and a half. Was it where we thought it was going to be?
And then we went ahead and we spent some additional architect money to save costs, and I think that's savings. I think we meant something like one-point-four million dollars.
So, where is, where is that savings in this process?
Well, I think if you go back and you look at the, the cost per square foot of the facility, what we looked at and what we've seen from this project is that this is a very competitive cost per square foot for something that was bid in October of two thousand and fourteen. I think the budgeting figures are such that they are relying on a lower cost per square foot, and that's, that, that time has come and gone, and that's not the market today.
So, it's increased that much over the one-year period for six months?
Yeah. What, if you remember some of the information that we provided at last month's meeting, I think we were showing where costs, this, this project came in at, the building plus the site was a hundred and seventy-three dollars a square foot. And if you looked at the market, and if you translated that to today's dollars, it was in the neighborhood of, there was one at two-hundred-and-twenty-seven, one at a hundred and seventy-three, one at, actually, that's not translated. So, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, one-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, and a hundred and seventy-four dollars a square foot. So, that average price is much higher than the price that we have received on bid day.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Schu had one more comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave, I'm not sure, you know, of all the items that was on there that you took off, I think you've mentioned it was nine hundred items? Was it nine hundred?
Dollars.
Nine hundred, okay, I see, all right. Well, this will probably be my last opportunity to bring this up, and I wanted to bring it up because I don't know if this is incorporated in this plan or not, but the scenario is this. I have a parent that's got a disabled child, a physically disabled child, they're in a wheelchair. They pull up to the school. It's pouring down rain, and he's, he or she is with their child. And when, the time they get the wheelchair out, get the student out, you've probably heard this already, you know, do we have a way or a means to provide some type of a shelter for people that's got disabled children to pull up to so that they haven't got to get out of their car and stand in the rain, hold, try to hold an umbrella and get their child in, in the wheelchair, and get them wheelchared to, you know, wherever they got to go, and then the same repeat process in the evening? You know, I see Janet's back there. I won't call on you to speak, Janet, but I'm sure you've probably got students in your school with that same scenario. And this particular parent that spoke with me, I think they're children that go to Patriot. And, you know, we really need to try to look out a little bit more, you know, for our students with disabilities because, you know, I mean, they're just as important as those that can get up and get out of the bus or get out of the car and walk in, obviously. And they're entitled to a little extra measure, I think, to get them, you know, in the school without being soaking wet, and then the repeat process for the parent when they come back to put the wheelchair in. So, is that incorporated, or do you know some type of a drive-up shelter for those type of students?
Yeah. So, as far as canopies go, we do have canopies both in the front entrance, which is, would be the parent drop-off, and we have canopies at the bus parking lot for the bus parking. We did not propose any reductions or cuts to the canopies. Specific to a drive-through or drive-under canopy, the school doesn't have a drive-under canopy, but it's certainly something that we can look at.
It seems to me like it needs to be, you know, obviously, the canopy is there. It just needs to be extended a little bit further and in the front of the line or the back of the line where it's just for those particular students to be able to get out of their car.
Yeah, and I would have to look at the design. Often, we do try to can a lever it out so that, but we also have to be very careful that we don't lose the canopy to, you know, a truck, you know, height that, you know, isn't paying attention, and that will happen.
I could see that very easily happening, but, you know, this is an issue that I would like to see us, not only if it's not for this school, but at least look at it for this school, but some of the other schools, you know, that's got this issue. And obviously, it's going to require funding, and then, of course, that's probably where I'm going to come in play at some point. But it's something, though, that I think that we need to try to do, though, if we can. And we're not talking about tens of millions of dollars. It's not that much, you know, to do just a little bit more for those kids.
That's a good point.
Just for whatever's worth.
I can tell you that at the same meeting where we went through the VE list, we also looked at the schematic design for Mount Pleasant Middle School, and a canopy we talked about. And the canopy there is on the front and extends through the island out into the parking lot, so it does exactly what you're talking about doing, but the layout is conducive to that. So, I mean, we did, you know, I'll give Dave the credit, he's the one that brought it up, talked about it, but we did, that was something we did talk about. So, okay. Real quick, I wanted to point out that Chuck was in our meeting. So, from a maintenance standpoint, we weren't just ripping off items of things that he's going to have to deal with. He was in agreement for items that we said, well, we will decline that because that might be a maintenance problem, or we'll accept that because, hey, the savings is worth it and it won't be, create a burden down the road. So, just, just so you guys know, he was involved with that, that discussion. So, yeah, all right. Everybody okay with consent? Not in the head? Okay. Fantastic. Well, we will move forward with that next week, and now we're going to move on to 4.04. And board members, I don't, if you have something to say, you certainly can. This is basically a legal agreement because we're going to build a school on property that we don't own. So, that, that's the bottom line. There's not a real, there's not a whole lot really to talk about. Sarah has nothing really to add, other than the document speaks for itself, so unless somebody really has something they want to say about it, can I get a nod of the heads for consent? All right.
Property we don't own.
Well, we're acting as the agent for the county because the county owns the property, and we're going to build the building.
Oh, on that property?
Yes.
And then, and then when it's all finished, the county get the deed back.
Yeah, that's right.
But it's on the existing property, right?
Yes. Yeah. Okay. We'll move on. 4.05, NCSB board member Rob Walter, or excuse me, to have training hours submitted to the NCSB, NCSBA for Rob. Rob took an ADA course. Do you want to tell a little bit about it?
That's a free course online. I would recommend you all take it if you want a little background on the ADA laws. It was pretty helpful to get an overview. It's not, I mean, it covers a lot of different things.
Okay. Rob requested that we submit it for board training, and I told him I thought that was a good idea. Everybody okay for consent? All right. Good deal. Well, Rob, that was, sounds like a good class, so I'm glad you did that. And we will move on to Section Five. This is a little unusual. We don't typically have an action item at a work session, but this came up previously. There's a timing issue involved with Kelly, so we need to, they've asked us to take action on it, and we'll welcome Glenda to the podium, and she can present it to us.
All right. Thank you. First of all, I want to set the stage for this presentation by saying that all of our employees are valuable to the district, and it's our goal to continue advocating for each group to receive additional compensation. With that said, tonight, we are attempting to decrease a gap in administrator pay in order to increase retention of effective principals. Maya Angelo shared this thought. You can only become truly accomplished at something you love. Don't make money your goal. Instead, pursue the things that you love, the things that you love doing, and then do them so well that people can't take their eyes off of you. Obviously, educators across North Carolina have adhered to this suggestion by Angelo because they have continued in a profession for love and not money. Cabarrus County Schools is fortunate to have a group of administrators who love education and perform at a level that makes them very marketable across the state. Tonight, we have a representative group that made up our committee for this proposal tonight, and I would like to recognize those that are in the audience and just ask them to stand. We have Adam Arbuck, who's our principal at Wolf Meadow. We have Hill DeBats, who's our principal at AT Allen. Michelle Klein, our principal at Hickory Ridge High School. Brian Hamilton is AP at Irvin Elementary. Mike Jolly is principal at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Mary Beth Roth, she is at Winkler Middle School as principal. Janet Smith is principal at Weddington Elementary School. Sandy Valentine, AP at Concord High School. Dr. Jason Van Huclem is our deputy superintendent and assisted with this committee, as well as myself and our chief finance officer. So, at this time, I am going to ask Kelly Klutz, as our chief finance officer, to take a few moments to highlight some of the funding information, and then we're going to have Adam Arbuck and Michelle Klein come up and do a presentation and share some additional information with you all from our committee's perspective, and then Kelly and I will come back for questions. Okay?
Okay. So, I know sometimes it's hard for us to listen when we have questions in our head. So, there's three things that I want to tell you prior to the presentation because I want you to listen to the presentation. So, three points. One is the funding for this. I want to talk to you about the funding that's, that we're going to use for this, or we're going to propose to use for this. So, the state does a projection of our ADM, and they do that early back in February, March, and they projected our ADM, our average daily membership, at thirty thousand, five-hundred-and-nineteen students. And now, at the second month, or not now, but at the second month of school, we had over two hundred students more than that projection. So, what that does is that gives us funding for those two hundred students. So, when we planned our budget, we plan with the projected number, the thirty thousand, five-hundred-and-nineteen students. So, we plan on that number of students, and we plan on the, the dollars that are associated with those students. So, now I'm expecting an adjustment for those additional two hundred students from the state. We have our classrooms settled. Our class sizes are adequate. They're suitable, and we don't anticipate changing those levels at this moment. So, the state will give me at least eight, eight teaching positions with this increase. They'll give me those positions in a dollar, a teaching, a position allotment. So, I will take eight of the, if the board... So I will take eight of the, if the board agrees to do this, I will take eight of my locally paid teachers. I will move them to state-paid position allotments. That will free up about four hundred thousand dollars of my locally paid, my local money. And that will allow me to have a reoccurring, uh, revenue stream or, or expense to be able to pay for this. So I wanna put your mind at ease that we can pay for this and we can pay for this beyond one year, okay? So that's the first thing that I want you to know. The second thing is that we, we see this as a dire need. We feel like we need to stop this, this, uh, wound from bleeding. But we, we've recognized that we have other issues. That this, this is not just a principal issue, this is a system issue. We've brought it to the board, we've brought it to the commissioners, and we're not planning to stop bringing it. I want you to know that in twelve thirteen fiscal year, twelve thirteen, in our bu- budget proposal, we asked the commissioners for two million dollars to, and part of that was to do the salary increase, salary study. In thirteen fourteen, we asked for four million dollars to support the salary study. This is teachers and principals and, and all of our staff. In January two thousand fourteen, we issued, we issued a resolution and we went straight to the board and we asked for this money again. That's the third time. And believe it or not, the third time we got a little bit of money, so maybe the third time's the charm. In two thousand fourteen fifteen, in our budget request, we asked for it again, another two million dollars. And I assure you, we will ask for it again and again and again. We plan to fight for our teachers and our other staff. We're trying to stop the bleeding right now with this. That's all we're, we're doing, okay? We haven't forgotten teachers, we haven't forgotten other staff. We're just trying to, to stop the wound right now, okay? That's two. The third thing that I wanna tell you is that our teachers, um, at the state level got a pay increase on average. It was across-the-board average, different for a level zero teacher, different for a thirty-year teacher, but on average, it was a seven percent pay increase, okay? Remember hearing those numbers? Our principals and our assistant principals, on average, got a point seven eight percent pay increase, okay? What we're gonna ask you tonight is gonna equate to a four point two nine percent pay increase for our principals. Add those two numbers together, you're gonna get about a five percent pay increase. Now, it's still less than what teachers will have received in this fiscal year. We're not suggesting that teachers are more valuable than principals, they're all valuable to us. Again, we're just trying to stop the bleeding, okay? All right, so that's, that's my three points. So I hope that we freed your mind of some things and you can listen to our principals and hear their, their points with the presentation.
Fantastic, thank you Kelly. Now we will welcome, uh, Adam and Michelle to our podium and thank you for being here.
Mr. Chair, while they're getting all ready, I wanted to add just a little bit to, uh, Ms. Klutz's presentation there. When she refers to, just so that everybody will know and the viewing audience will know, when she says, "Stop the bleeding," we don't have people physically out here bleeding. What we're talking about is that people, at certain times in their life, decide they want to move to a different school district, to somewhere else. And that's what we're talking about because we have lost hundreds and hundreds of people over the last few years. And then more recently, we've lost, uh, principals and assistant principals. And so when she says, "Stop the bleeding," that's what we're referring to. We're trying to, um, bring our people up. We're still not where we need to be. Even with this increase, I think it's probably, I think when we talked today, it's one-third of what it needed to be, you know, to get us in a competitive situation. But anyway, uh, when we say, "Stop the bleeding," we're trying to get people to stay with Cabarrus County Schools and commit to Cabarrus County Schools with their, finishing their career here. And, cause it costs to retain people, it costs to train people. And whenever you lose those people, then somebody, some other district benefits from what we've done. And then we gotta start all over again. So this is a way that we, um, are, that the system is proposing, that the board look at this and, and provide this increase. So, um, that's all I got. You go ahead, Adam.
All right, he said it all. So, um, we're here tonight to talk from the principal's perspective too and to talk about what the committee discussed. Um, our strategic plan says that in order, that we wanna be a top ten school district. And, um, we're here to, to make the case that to be a top ten district in the state and in, in the nation, leadership matters and the leadership at the school. Like Kelly said, the current, um, state compensation structure doesn't, doesn't really get everything done that, that needs to be done. We, we already mentioned that some of the principals have already left. So this is from the Independent Tribune, um, this summer, the two of Cabarrus County's top principals, um, left for C M S. Making between twenty-seven, twenty-four thousand dollars more a year, um, to go down there. In order to retain and recruit the high-quality administrators that we need at the schools and keep them from going to other districts, we need to increase the salaries for all the administrators in the county. This money can be life-changing for some people and their families, you know, twenty-four, twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, can change a lot. Um, and they don't have to significantly move. They can still stay, um, in their current houses, stay here and just commute there. So, um, we need to think about that, um, for our current administrators. In, uh, if you, here's a chart that shows in the calendar years, uh, two thousand, there was a chart, uh, there it is. Two thousand twelve, we lost seven assistant principals and one principal, two thousand thirteen, seven one. And two thousand fourteen, just during the calendar year, nine assistant principals and six principals have left. Um, and there's still two months left in the year. Four of those principals and three of those assistant principals left for, um, Charlotte Meck there as well. In order to retain the high-quality teachers that we need, we need the high-quality administrators in the school. Research shows that the number one reason that teachers stay, um, in the profession or leave the profession is administrative support in their schools and, and, and what they're doing there. This could get even worse, cause as Charlotte, um, Charlotte Mecklenburg, um, is looking at a quarter cent sales tax referendum, where the money will go straight to salaries to add to C M S. So the gap could get even larger. That's twenty-eight million dollars that the school board chair said is gonna go into salaries there. Right now, the average principal supplement in Cabarrus County is about thirty percent of what it would be in Charlotte Meck. And the average assistant principal supplement is about twenty percent of what it would be in Charlotte Meck right now.
And I'm gonna talk to you about just some other things that research indicates about, about the role of the principal. And I know most of you are familiar with this. I mean, you've, you've seen us at meetings and you've seen us, um, at, at different things. But the main thing is, the role of the principal has certainly changed over the, the past years. We are no longer just the manager of a school. Um, you know, as you all said before, it's the principal's role to be notifying parents of what is going on. All the things that you were talking about, about the roof and the caulking, that's my job to know about those things too, things I never thought I would have to learn about. But there are so many hats and so many things that we have to know about, um, that we really are the C E O of the most important company that there is. Because we are charged with, with our children. I mean, that's the most important thing that there is. Um, our schools are also, not just something we manage, we are charged with having vision statements and mission statements and things that we live and breathe and strategic plans, um, that are aligned with our strategic goals for the county. And the reason that Cabarrus County is so great is because we do those things and our principals believe those things and they make those workable, viable documents. And that's one of the reasons I'm so proud to be a part of them. Principals impact their students. Principals impact their students' outcomes, particularly at the most challenging schools. Um, and certainly, as, as Adam mentioned, I know it's something that every interview that I have with a teacher, and I've had lots of those, um, in, in the last few months, I'm trying to hire teachers. But I always say to them, the last question is, "What do you need from your administrators?" And the number one answer that they always say is, "I need support." And so I say to them, "Please tell me what that means to you." And the answer is always very different, but it does show you the important role that, that we really play, um, to them. Principal turnover adversely impacts schools. And Mr. Shu, I think, said it very clearly, that anytime we spend time sort of growing and coaching and cultivating people with, with the ideas of Cabarrus County and the ideas of our schools and we lose those people, the whole process has to start over again. Um, and the same thing, that when I go into a school with, with my vision and my vision and my mission and I get my school to buy into that and I leave, the whole process starts over again. Um, and that, that's sometimes very difficult to deal with. Effective principals retain and recruit effective teachers. Adam and our, Adam, Adam and I work with our new teacher leader group. And we do, um, a session with them called Monday Morning Leadership. Familiar with that book, Monday Morning Leadership? Well, one of the eight lessons in that book that we really harp upon with our, our teachers is the idea of hire smart. And we believe that as principals, that is the most important thing that we do. That we hire the best people to get in there to do the work that matters every day, which is to work and teach our students. And so if we do that, um, then that is, that's the most important thing we can do. We become more effective as we gain experience, so we might like to think we're pretty good. Um, you know, you're principal of the year and everything, but we're, we're rookies. But if you look at, you know, Janet and Hilda and Mary Beth, they can show you what we might aspire to be, um, someday, if we continue with this. And being an instructional leader is the hallmark of effective principals. And it wasn't that way fifteen years ago. Um, I just don't think that was the case, but I think it's definitely what it is now. And we have leadership from the top, um, in Cabarrus County School, that's telling us the rigor and the relationships and the guaranteed curriculum that we wanna do. But those things are not gonna happen in our schools unless we are there to monitor them and to make sure that they're happening. Some other responsibilities that we have, we are responsible for student engagement, achievement and growth from pre-K to early college. That is essentially our business, if you wanna think about it that way, that we aren't selling cars, we are growing students. And that's the number one thing that we're supposed to do. Fiscal responsibility for our schools and, you know, the A D M budgets that we have. Adam probably has one of the smaller budgets, um, in the school system and I probably have one of the largest, because you have how many students?
Six hundred and three.
And I have almost sixteen hundred and three. So, you know, when you look at that, we have a very big, big difference. Um, we oversee a variety of extracurricular activities, athletics, clubs, performance, competitions, students going all over the place, doing, doing wonderful things that we wanna encourage them to do. Managing our school facilities, you know, we have not only school buildings, but we have all kinds of athletic fields and just gyms and things like that, that we, we have to be responsible for. Again, recruiting and retaining a highly qualified staff. And the other thing is that we're often put in positions to have to hire faculty that really could make a lot more money doing something else. For example, I know I'm right now, um, have to hire a health occupations teacher. Well, in order to get this position, you have to have been a nurse for three years. So one of the jobs I have to do is I have to explain to someone who works as a registered nurse, making far more money than I can pay them, why they want to come and work at my school and why they want to come and work with me. Okay, so that makes a very, um, a very, very tenuous thing for me to do sometimes. We also main, we form and maintain relationships with complex fundraising organizations. Uh, we develop and implement innovative programs, academies, magnet programs, pilots, we were having some discussion about that. All these things that are evolving and have been evolving over the last few years in Cabarrus County, really exciting things, um, that, that are going on. Um, and we, we manage student discipline every day. Um, and sometimes those things are pretty easy and sometimes they aren't. Sometimes they lead to, you know, criminal situations and, um, legal investigations and going to court and those kinda things. We evaluate and monitor staff. And again, most important thing we do is to coach our staff. Um, we, we hope we've always hired the right people, but if, if case there's not something just right, that's our responsibility to make them better, okay? That's what we're supposed to do. Schools are often recognized as a symbol of the community and, and we as the principals are often seen as the face and the voice. I know I was actually two weeks ago, um, at the Harrisburg Town Council, um, work session, um, you know, talking about some things in our community. So it's important, um, we're important for this. Um, we make decisions, um, to make sure that we implement local, state and federal mandates. And just as you all saw with all your policy updates, that's not easy to keep up with sometimes. So luckily we have good people to, to keep us informed of that. We are constantly looking for ways to keep kids in school, to increase our graduation rate. And that's the reason that North Carolina has increased over the years and that Cabarrus County, um, is frankly, just, just really getting off the charts with that, thank goodness. And we are responsible for student supervision and safety. And we always have been, and that's always gonna be our number one goal. But I think you would agree that with our society, the way that it is, with unfortunately, lots of episodes of school violence and with social media and things the way it is, just making things a lot more rampant, that's become an increasingly more challenging task for us. And unfortunately, while all these responsibilities have increased, our pay really has not. So a comparison of the teacher and principal sal- salary shows that the vast majority of assistant principals and principals at the same experience level would have very little variance in their salary. And I can tell you for, um, experience that I taught high school English for thirteen years and I was a teacher with a master's degree and a national board. And when I became an assistant principal, if I had not fallen into that little clause that I got to keep my national board pay, I would've lost money to become an assistant principal. So I was very fortunate that that was something that worked in my favor. Because although I, I really enjoyed my experience as an English teacher, I thought, "This is my calling and this is the passion and this is where I'm meant to be." So I hate to think that we have other people that are gonna miss out on that for those reasons.
And I only had a master's degree, I wasn't nationally board certified, but it was a forty dollar a month raise to become an assistant principal, to go from a teacher. So not even enough to buy lunch in the cafeteria each day, um, difference.
That's why they're having that.
Yeah.
Problem in the cafeteria. Yeah, that's exactly it.
And I like to eat, so.
Um, and in or, in order to attract and retain our effective principals and assistant principals, like our principal of the year, we have to do adequate compensation and supplements must be increased, um, to be competitive.
Wonderful fruit basket, too. Um, so what this, this chart here that we're gonna talk about is actually, if you think about it a way, a cost savings. And, you know, uh, Mr. Shu mentioned it, that, that the cost that goes into training new staff, there's a lot of, um, hidden costs there. So anytime you hire a new person, you gotta go through recruiting and doing those things or, um, training them or, or the lost productivity of mentors having to work with them and things like. Sorry, technology. So it's important that we, that we think about this, the money upfront is gonna be saving money, cause every time we hire a new principal, there's more training and things that need to go into that. So when we, when the committee met, we talked about a lot of different factors to try and, um, come up with a, a fair and, and a, a good start to address the issue of supplements. Currently, the supplement is based just on your, um, a base pay, just on your years and level that you work on. So what the committee came up with was a three, was three different parts to the new proposal here. There's the base pay, uh, percentage based on, um, what level you're at, at principal, middle, a principal, um, and at what level you're at, assistant principal. Uh, there's also a loyalty, um, section there. So the longer you're with Cabarrus County Schools, whether it's as a teacher or an administrator, the, the, two more percent for every five years there as well. And then there's an at-risk factor, um, percentage there too, because, um, schools with a, a lower at-risk, um, population compared to a school with a higher at-risk population, there are some different challenges and, um, duties that come along with, with that there. So the committee met, we, we talked through these and, and felt that this, um, is, all three of these areas are all cut and dry and they're very easy to put somebody on one of these levels and figure out where they are. There's nothing, um, subjective, nothing, um, that could be cloudy or become an issue. It's very easy to know how long you've been here, what type of school you're at and what level you're at. And that this plan is not, um, perfect doesn't fix everything, doesn't completely close the gap to the Charlottes and the other areas here, but it's a, it's a great first step and it puts us on the right track to, um, getting where we need to be. Also, it's a relatively small amount of money compared to the total budgets and some of the big numbers that we talk, that you guys especially talk about here. It's a relatively small, um, dollar amount, but it can have a huge impact on staff, on morale and ultimately the students. Because the, that we keep the better principals and the better administrators working to recruit and get better and better teachers, it's gonna have great effects for our students here. So Kelly, do you wanna talk more about the number part?
There's one thing in particular I wanted to reiterate. You've heard of just-in-time inventory? I have just-in-time supporting data, okay? Is that, is that good? Thanks to Hilda Batts sitting in the background. She, uh, sent me an email and the, the headlines, um, reads, "Replacing a Principal Can Cost District Seventy-Five K." And I'll give you, I'll send you this email, um, if you guys want. But about half of our new principals leaving their third year of school at, at a school, according to a recent report of the School Leaders Network. The group says that high turnover rate comes with a cost of about seventy-five thousand dollars to recruit and train each replacement. And then there's an article, so I'll forward you that, thank you, Ms. Batts. But, uh, so, we, we tried to give you, um, you know, I talked, uh, earlier in general about the overarching, it's a, you know, four percent, four and a half percent, pay increase overall, based on their salary. If you look at the supplement, we look at it different. And then I, I broke it down by level, um, principals and A P. So we can look at it a lot of different ways. And so with this slide, we're looking at supplement. So the way that, the percentage of salary to supplement before the, the increase and then the percentage to salary after the increase. So what we're, what you're seeing is that it would take thirty-seven thousand approximately of funds would go into the, into our high school principals. Their average, um, supplement would move from twenty-six percent of their state salary to thirty-two percent on an average, okay? Same wage, just going down the chart. You can see, um, probably one of the, the biggest areas of increase would be our elementary school. school principals, you know, about an eight percent increase. But they average out in the end to be about that four, four point two or so increase. But you can see exactly where, where the money hits and how many, and what's important, too, is how many people we're affecting. So, there's a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that it's going to cost us for, to hit all of the elementary principals and get them in that schedule, but we're hitting twenty-two. There's twenty-two staff members that we're affecting. So, that's, you know, part of why the number's a little bit more. Uh-oh, sorry, I didn't mean to do all that. So, I want you to look at it one other way, and then I'll take questions on, on those. And this document shows percentage of salaries. Sometimes the numbers are really big. When you go from twenty-six percent of somebody's salary to thirty-six percent or whatever that number was, that they look like really big numbers. But now, we're just looking at, if you look at the percentage of increase over their total salary, and that's what we're, we're used to, to talking about in general, and the public is used to seeing that kind of thing, not just supplement or state salary or local salary. So, that's why we gave it to you in this, this presentation. So, for high school principals, it would be a four point two, four point seven two pay increase on their salary. Middle school would be an average of seven point oh three, and just, just down the line, seven point four three for elementary principals. So, those are the, the average, these are average percent. So, one elementary principal might be, you know, a little less, one elementary principal might be a little bit more, but the average is that number. Okay? So, questions about that? Now, the, the number down here, I'm not sure how to, let's see, let me see if I can get this. This number, three sixteen six oh eight, does not have FICA and retirement in it. So, the number that I gave you earlier, the three eighty-eight, includes FICA and retirement. Okay? So, be it.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Adam and Michelle. We appreciate that. Dr. Shepherd had a comment he wanted to make.
This will make sense in a few seconds, and David, you'll follow me on this, because this is like your kind of thinking, but it is a compliment.
We're all now nervous.
That's right. No, don't be nervous, don't be nervous, okay? When Tammy Wynette used to sing Stand By Your Man, it had one message, okay? When Lyle Lovett sang it, it had a totally different meaning. Our principals did not come to us tonight or four months ago, whenever this process started to say, "We want more money or we will." This is a process that's driven from the fact that this, that I know as our leader that if we don't pay our principals more, we're going to lose them, and I'm tired of losing them. So, I want you to give this serious consideration so we can keep good people like the ones that are sitting in our audience and the many more that they represent, because they're hardworking and they're deserving, and this is one of my highest priorities as their leader, is to make sure that they're well compensated. So, this is, I'm asking you to, ooh, this is good, I'm asking you to stand by our principals now, all right?
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. That was pretty good, good comments. And we'll start with any, everybody sat down, they ran from the podium, but if you have a question, certainly feel free, but Mr. Walter, we'll start with you. Do you have a question? Actually, before we do that, you gotta give a nod of the heads for consent. We just bypassed that altogether. Oh, that's right, we gotta do it tonight. Sorry, we gotta do even better than that. Go ahead, Rob.
Do you remember, I guess, a salary study that was done, what, three years ago? What did it say about the, the underpayment of our administrators?
I'm glad you asked, because I just happen to have that, that data. Okay, yeah, let me do this. So, the salary study is, is at least three years old now, probably a little bit older. And so, the salary study said that at this time, the average principal and assistant principal, and they combined them at the time, they didn't break them out, supplement was eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars at the time. They said that for the average responding districts, and those were districts that, that we decided that were, that were similar to us in size and, and, and other, and other things, should have been eleven, it is eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Okay? So, that was, and that's not been adjusted, and we need, need to do a new salary study. So, this, on average, will increase each principal, assistant principal, put them all in the same bucket, one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That means we still have two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to go to get to what a three-year-old salary study saying. So, we're, will be, if you approve this, a third of the way to a three-year-old salary study.
And then all that time, Charlotte or somebody else is up, upping theirs as well.
Exactly, that's why we need to continue our salary.
And tomorrow with their quarter cent sales tax.
Yeah, exactly, hope it doesn't, never mind.
Let's see, the one thing that just jumps out at me is this differential for the, the elementary school and a high school principal. Why is it so different? I mean, doesn't Adam have, I mean, his amount of time he spends is, would, would be just as, I mean, I guess it's a bigger, is it all based on the amount of students or what is it based on?
Well, it's one of the things that we really talked about as a committee, and when we looked at the amount of time, not the number of students, but the amount of time, the responsibilities, the number of hours, and while all of these folks work tremendously hard and they do a great job every day, the most difficult job that we have is recruiting high school principals because of that reason. You know, we have, while we have a difficult time recruiting principals overall, when you start looking for a high school principal, and we had to do that unfortunately this past summer, that's a much more difficult position to fill. So, as, as the committee looked at that, and we had a, we had those variables in place already, we've all, we've had that, and, and I think if you look across the state, you're going to find that, you're going to find because of the difficulty of recruiting, you've got the elementary, the middle and the high, and there's a scale there.
You're gonna have to share that with me, okay. That makes, I guess it makes, makes sense, it's a, the other thing I didn't see, we don't have anything regarding school performance, does that, we, we talk about at-risk.
Good question, good question.
But do we address anything about school performance, isn't it?
That's another area that we did spend a lot of time discussing, and one of the things that, one of the issues with the data this year at the state level has been the validity of how to assign that to the teachers for effectiveness and how to assign that to the principals for effectiveness with their standards six and eight. So, this, we want to move towards performance, and, and so this is a starting place for us. It's a foundation where we can start, as someone said earlier, to close that gap, but ultimately, we want to make sure that everything that we have when it becomes a performance-related bonus or supplement, that everything's valid there and there's not anything that could be perceived as arbitrary.
Okay, I know we celebrate the good, good performance at some of these schools, but if there should be some financial benefit to that, too, if they've put up, put forth the effort. Overall, I, I agree, I mean, the, the amount of work that you guys do and put in, I, I commend you and I, I appreciate you, and if this is a small way to, to help, I mean, there's probably more than just salary that we could probably do, but this is a start, I think. So, I'm, I'm supportive of it.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I've got a couple of questions, you know, I always do. You know, I want, I know Dr. Shepherd's down there saying, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I'm going to rally for the top." Well, I work from the bottom up, and I want to rally for them, because I, I'm still thinking about the teachers and the clerical. And one of my first questions is, have we got any salary for the ones that were at the lower level and had not gotten up to where they need to be? Because I know that was one of our first things when we were looking at the salary study. We had the non-cler, a non-certified that were not even up to the minimum. Did we get money for that to start with?
So, Ms. Carpenter, we did the same thing for those staff members that we're, we're asking the board to do here, is we actually raised, put that, took that out of our fund balance to raise them to a, a minimum level. And we did that, you, you took board on, that board action on that, gosh, that was, you know, I'd have to pull that.
But we did, we, we got them there now.
The board did, did take action on that, we pulled them up to a minimum level. So, yes, you did, you did take care of some of our lowest, very lowest paid staff.
So, we've got them to minimum now, right?
We're, we're not all, yes, to the minimum of the, the salary range, yes. Now, are we at the midpoint? No, we, we have a lot of work to do, but eighty-five percent of your non-exempt staff are not at the midpoint.
Okay. Now, the other question that I have, and where I'm kind of getting a little heartburn, we are not offering the loyalty service to anybody else. The only people we're going to be offering this to now would be just our APs and our principals, is that correct? And that's what's kind of giving me a little heartburn. I could do possibly the at-risk population and maybe the base to start with, because again, I've seen these guys at work, I've been there in the school, and I know what you do, guys, I really do. And I know we've got to do something, but two, I'm a realist. I know we can't, we're not a Mecklenburg, guys, I know we're not. And, and I can't blame you if you want to go fight the traffic and fight with the other guy, I mean, I can't blame you. But listen, but we can't be a Mecklenburg, we're never going to be that. And, I mean, to do that with that, the salaries and everything, we've got to compare apples to apples. I mean, we do, we've got to be realistic about it. I mean, the size and everything like that, and we can keep chasing the dog's tail all we want to, but I don't know if we're ever going to catch that tail. I mean, really, we, I mean, we can keep trying, trying and trying, but we've got to compare the, the districts that we can be realistic with. But with that, I, it, it would really bother me if we are going to do that. We have got to be realistic and do it to, I would say, if we're going to give something like that, we need to be able to give it to our other employees. And I would feel more comfortable, I could give the other things, like I say, because the at-risk, do you know how many other, I know that we do have some that are given that at-risk. Do you know how many other districts are given the at-risk?
No, ma'am, but I, one of the things that, you know, while we would love to be able to do this for all of our employees and, and realize that this is a starting point with our administrators, but one of the things with that loyalty part of that was really to encourage that retention here in Cabarrus County Schools and to reward those principals who have remained faithful to us and let them know that, you know, one of the things about Cabarrus County Schools that impresses me most as a person coming in is the fact that we're always leading the pack. We're not the ones that are following. You know, we look at new ways and new opportunities to, whether it's from a curriculum standpoint or whether it's from a recruitment and retention packet for our administrators. So, that's one of the things when we looked at what, you know, what are some opportunities for us to close that gap a little bit? And can we look at what normal, what, what everyone else out there's doing, and they're doing a base supplement, what some of those folks are doing, they're doing at-risk? And when we looked outside of that box a little bit more and looked nationally, some of the national places, what those school districts were doing is they were looking at loyalty, you know, within that district, a little bit along the lines of what you do as a CEO with a company, you know, giving them a bonus or something to reward them for that loyalty. And I think that's why this committee ended up putting those three factors in there or those three variables, because we've had a base supplement, which is not enough, but we've done everything we could do. So, what can we do to address it from an at-risk standpoint? Keeping in mind, even with the loyalty, not everyone will get the highest percentage there, but it rewards your service to Cabarrus County Schools, not as a state employee, but your faithfulness here. So, that's one of the reasons the committee just, you know, put that in there. We want to lead the pack, we want to encourage the rest of the state to look at that when they're looking at a local supplement.
Well, and that's, that's good, but then, too, we've had well over two hundred and something, teachers leave. And that's why I, I, we've got to start somewhere, and that, that would be a compromise to do that. And two, I really think we need to make sure, because there has been, you know, everybody's been through some rough times, and I would rather look at something where we can help our teachers, too, and, and to help, help some of our other individuals. And this is just, just a thought, and like I say, I could, I feel comfortable maybe with the other two parts to get started with something, and that's just my two cents worth.
Carolyn, let me just add a couple notes. It would be my intention, and this is not something I've discussed with Dr. Shepherd or anyone else at this point, but we have dollars that we've asked for on the salary study every year, and, and we will ask for them again on this year's budget request. But I plan to, to work with the committee and, and with Glenda. The idea is to mirror this supplement schedule for teachers. So, once we get something in place for principals that we like, and eventually, the idea would be also to, to build a, a performance with an EVOs component in it, and then it would, we would mirror the exact same thing. So, the, the way that principals are rewarded is the way that teachers are rewarded. And that's, that's the, the long-range plan, we're not going into this blindfolded. But that can't happen overnight, we have to start small, do it right, isn't that a Colleen saying, quote, "And we, to, to do this kind of thing for our teachers would cost me over six million dollars." And, and I just, just don't have that, can't create that, can't grow it on trees. But if we can structure this, one, structure the, the supplement schedule for teachers, know what it's going to cost us, put a plan in place, present it to the commissioners, present it to the committee and get everybody on board, then that's something that we can work on. We can do step one, step two, step three. This is step ha, one half, you know, this is before the game starts. And if we can't get this rolling, I don't know how we can get anything for teachers going, because the idea is to mirror it. If we don't have anything to mirror, what, what are we going to do for teachers?
Thank you, Kelly. Thanks, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker?
Well, thank you for your hard work at clarification, and I know we talked earlier today and appreciate the output of that conversation, because this makes it a lot more understandable for myself and probably for a lot of the other people that are watching Having spent thirty-some years of my working life in management, and unfortunately, you guys are going to resent me calling you managers, but you are. You are on the factory floor, i.e. the school, and you have a lot of little workers who are trying to do their work and make the most of themselves, and then you have people who are trying to supervise those folks. And usually, you're what I would call the higher level of a middle management position, and that, you get hit from both ends. You get hit from the central side and you get hit from the lower side. And you're right in the middle and you just catch it from both sides. And usually, as a result of that, you have to be on your game all day long and probably into the night, because all day, there's nothing but interruptions in your day. And then you've got to have some quiet time to do what you're really supposed to do, which is vision your organization and try and move it forward. Guess what? You can't do that when the kids are in school. So, you have to spend the quiet time when they're not there doing that, which means you're not with your families, you're doing that work at your computer or whatever you're trying to do to build those relationships and build that vision for your team, and you have to do that on your time or some kind of time. But guess what? There's no margin for the family. There's very little margin for sleep, because the family wants whatever sleeping time that you really want. So, you, so you end up burning the candle at both ends, and that's your life every day. Go in there and you try, you have to go in there inspired. Our principals are doing that, our APs are doing that. We're training our APs to be like our principals, and we want them to give everything they possibly can, and out of a hundred and sixty-eight hours a week, they might get forty-two hours of sleep, if they're lucky. So, the rest of the week is dedicated either to some kind of family time, but I would say somewhere between fifty-five to seventy-five hours of that hundred and sixty-eight is doing work for the school system, for our children, and giving up their lives for that. One percent raise since two thousand nine, and that was because we begged for it in January last year. After three ti, after two other times before that, maybe even more than before I got on the board, but we begged for it and we finally got something. This year, the state was so kind to give you a point seven percent raise, five hundred dollars. By the time taxes are taken out, that comes out to about a three hundred dollar raise for the whole year. Thank goodness, gas has gone down. So, you can't buy a little more gas now than what you used to be able to buy. We're now asking, and there, there is a standard deviation in there, and you can see that the, the pay increase goes anywhere from an average of seven point four three percent down to two point the pay increase goes anywhere from an average of 7.43% down to 2.6. So it's, it's not equitable across the board in the way these are. But inside that, you've got to understand, there's probably some dynamics in the APs and the principals, and some of that dynamics is, are that some people have been here longer than others and that kind of thing, or there's a lot of very young people in the assistant principals that are getting to 2.23%, and so they're not getting some of that longevity pay, and they're in low-risk schools. So you, you look at all that. I think that on the average, a 4.29% plus the .7% that you presented to us, which is about a 5% raise, is fair and equitable based on what, what's going on. Now, our teachers got a 7% raise on the average, and I have something that I want to talk about with that in just a moment, but that was an average, and we know that not everybody's gonna be compensated at all these levels. It is really important that the public understand that we lost 15% of our APs and principals just in the space of July to now. 15% of our workforce. Now, that's your leadership workforce. In any factory, that would be crushing. And now we've had to raise new people up and try to get them filled in and trying to take over the team. That is a major demotivator for the people who are being led, because their shepherds are gone, and now they're out there trying to adapt to a new shepherd who's trying to learn their job at the same time. And I don't know if you know much about leadership, but leadership requires you to lead and people follow you, not to stand behind them and beat them up to the, to the, to where you want them to go. They gotta want to follow you, and, and it takes time to develop people who want to stand out in front and walk the path, and the people follow them. And that's what we're talking about here. It takes time to develop people with those skills. They gotta make a lot of mistakes. They gotta mend a lot of fences, because they're gonna hurt people's feelings, and they gotta go back and say, "I'm sorry. Forgive me. Stick with me. I'll learn as I go." And that's the kind of thing that our principals are having to learn. We lost 15% of those who have been tried and true. And for us not to, for us to turn our backs on these folks right now is a travesty. We've got to do something now. Now, let me move to the next thing. We've got to continue on with our commissioners. That salary survey is old now. It's three years old. And guess what? The exponential curve continues to move on. Districts continue to reward their people at higher and higher rates. We're behind. We've got to do another salary survey. Our teachers need to be rewarded. Our teachers got left out of longevity pay, and a lot of our veteran teachers are feeling the pain of that. And I'll guarantee you, what do our principals have to do? What do our APs have to do? They have to motivate the people who are so demotivated because of the way the salary increases were structured. So they gotta go out there and whisper to their hearts and get them focused on why they're there and the esoteric portion of education. And that is the heartfelt transfer of knowledge from you to the children, and get focused on that and nothing else. So again, I, I'm gonna implore our commissioners, they've got to rise up. They've got to understand that the Cabarrus County taxpayer has gotten extremely great value, better value than they could have ever thought. One of the lowest per pupil compensated school districts in the entire state. We're putting out, 89% of our kids are going and graduating from college, from high school. $44 million was gotten here, we got in, in scholarships for our kids. That's almost what this county gives us in money. So our kids almost brought in $44 million, which we used from the local. Our county commissioners got to find a way to get the public to understand that you cannot keep treating these people and expect our educational system not to go ahead and top out and to run off the parabola. We're at the top. We're almost at the weightless portion of our district right now. We've gone as high as we can go, and if we don't start doing something, weightlessness is going to seize, and we're gonna get into gravity, and gravity's gonna pull you down. And I want to keep going up. I want to see our district continue to go up. Our parents want our district. But there's a sacrifice that's gonna have to be made, and our commissioners are gonna have to get out there, get in front of this ship, and realize that you are doing the great value on the backs of our teachers and on our assistant principals. Today, we had the opportunity to deal with our assistant principals. In the past, we've talked to our commissioners. We presented budget after budget, and Kelly articulated that at the very beginning of this conversation. In mediation, we were pushing for raises. Guess what? We didn't get them. We got something, and we got what we could do with, but that's all we got. And we dealt with that. But now we're here again, and we've got a new group of commissioners coming in, and we're hoping we're gonna get some different results. Our budget has been out there for everyone to see. Everyone knows that we asked for $2.63 million in raises this year, and we didn't get one penny. We tried, but we didn't get one penny. Our public needs to help our teachers, and it's gonna take their voice and 180,000 people in this county to stand up and talk to Mr. Schu and say, "It is all right," to help our teachers out. Find a way to do it. Find some creative way to help our teachers. So I am in support of this, and I will go down for that. Now, I want to close my portion with a, with a note that I received from a friend of mine today, who's a teacher in our school system, and I want you to understand the heart that goes into this. It says, "Hey, Barry, I saw in the paper yesterday, the school board is looking at raising principal pay to retain them. That's great, and they deserve it. But what about the veteran teachers who didn't receive or got a minimal amount of a raise in September? The raises all went to the younger teachers. I do hope Cabarrus County will acknowledge the work that we have done over our careers to put and keep CCS at the top in North Carolina. We stayed even, though our salaries were frozen. Mine was 12 years of my 24. Our longevity has been taken away. They capped our salary. Even though we met and exceeded every criteria DPI and county threw at us, we entered and even taught all those young teachers who got a significant raise. Barry, I hope you will please say something about this at the meeting tonight. Veteran teachers went from qualifying for that 25% raise to nothing. What are we supposed to do? Who represents us if it's not you?" Right now, I'm representing our principals. I try to represent our teachers every day, but we've got to, we've got to implore our citizens to understand what we're doing. And if you want good education for your children, you can't keep paying teachers at the bottom of the, and putting them on the bottom of the heap. This is not Wisconsin. And some people, some people got a bad name for the Wisconsin, because that was, those teachers there were union-paid and they were entitled. This is not a group that feels entitled. This is a group that truly is professional, truly has risen above the occasion every time, and this is a group that needs to be rewarded. And we, as taxpayers, need to understand what we need to do to help our commissioners get to that point. We're not begging for big, big salaries. And this is not a big salary for them. It still doesn't get us anywhere close to the salary survey. It only gets us one-third of the way there, just for them. We're trying to get a third of the way there for our teachers and non-certified, and we need help. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Barry, I, too bad you're not running for reelection tomorrow. I'd, I'd, I'd vote for you. That was a good campaign speech, Barry. But, you know, I learned, one of many things that I learned, I operated my own and operated, started from scratch, my own business, and most of you that know me know that we, you know, had a very successful business. And one of the many things that I learned about people is it's a whole lot easier to retain good, qualified people than it is to rehire and retrain good, qualified people, because it costs us money. And it, you know, you got leaders like our principals, for example. Their team, their staff, they go out and they search and they build a team. They build a team, just like a, a coach does with a football team. He, he recruits and drafts and tries to get anybody and everybody he can that meets the criteria that he's looking for to win games. And with principals, well, they want to win ballgames too, if they got ball teams. But then again, though, the academic success of a school is driven by the effectiveness of the principal. The principal, if he or she is effective, you've heard the old saying, "The ship is no better than its captain." And so you've got to have good, qualified people, and you've got to pay those people. Now, one of, another thing that I learned, and that is, and it's still just as true today as it was when I was in business, and that is that people are motivated by money. There is no doubt, they're motivated about it. And one, one more thing is, this is, it can't always be about money, folks. Can you imagine what kind of a society we would live in if it was all based on money? What kind of doctors would we have? What kind of rocket scientists that we have that, you know, do space exploration and all of that, if it was all about the money? There has to be some type of dedication to what you went to school for, dedication and a purpose for why you're doing what you do. But on the other hand, though, people don't always see it that way, because I had people that would go across the street or to the next company, they'd move for a dollar on the hour or 50 cents on the hour and, and drive 30 or 40 miles further to get that. My grandfather, he's done passed on now, but he'd drive clean across town to save a nickel on a gallon of milk. He didn't think about, you know, well, I could get it here, and the gas wasn't but 25 cents a gallon back then, but still drive a clean across town. The time, time had to be worth something. But anyway, I don't, I don't want to get off on all those real-life stories and things, but this really is a real-life story. You know, a lot of businesses, they give their employees a merit increase. We don't have anything such as a merit increase. We don't have anything to reward our people. And I like the fact that this hopefully can be mirrored for our teachers and other staff members that are, that have been faithful too. You know, we got janitors out there, custodians, that spend here 15, 20, 25 years, because every year at the retirement banquet, we have custodians retiring. We have media center people retiring and cafeteria people retiring. You know, they're important. Everybody is important, because it's got to be a team effort, Dr. Shepherd, from you, the coach, you know, the captain of the ship. It's got to be, we've got to be cohesive, and we've got to be a team. And unfortunately, you know, there's, the resources that we need to do what we want to do is just not there. And you know, and Carolyn, you talk about, and we talked about this, you and I, we talked about Mecklenburg County. Well, I'm not gonna say that we'll never be a Mecklenburg County, because you don't just say, "Never say never." But what I want, though, as a future county commissioner, is I want to see Cabarrus County be so good, have the absolute best education system in the state, that people are gonna want to come here. They're gonna want to bring their businesses here, and the downside to that is they're gonna bring their children here. So we gotta build more schools, and more schools, more businesses, more, 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 more. But that's the way it is, and so we can get competitive. We can. But the way it is right now, you know, we're looking at $19 billion in taxable assets for the county. Mecklenburg County, $300 billion. Their tax rate's 80.5. Ours is 70. So you see, it's very easy to see that the tax revenue is just not there. But the good thing about what we're talking about here tonight is that Ms. Klutz, you know, has found a way that she can take money from this area and put it in this area. And it's not gonna really cost us anything, because we're already got, we've already got the money. And there's no sense, if we added eight teachers, if we added eight teachers, when you look at the total, the big picture of all the classrooms that we have in Cabarrus County schools, 1,200 to 1,500 classes, what kind of an effect would eight teachers have? But you're looking at this 4.27 or 4.29% increase will affect 105 administrators, and it won't bring them up to where they need to be, but it's a start. And, you know, I applaud you both and the committee for trying to start something that's gonna make things better. That's our job, to make things better for them, for the students, for the parents, and everybody that's involved. We've got to try hard to make it better. And if we have got the, the limited resources, then we ought to put them to best use. And I think that's what you're doing. And, but the key thing is, is we need to try to retain. We don't want our people, that we've spent time and money, going here, going there, even out of state, in some cases, to recruit these highly qualified people, to bring them to Cabarrus County schools, so that we can continue to increase our graduation rate, we can increase our academic statistics and all of these things, and we spend money to get them here, and then guess what? They stay around, like you said, maybe a year or two, three years, and they get to think and say, "Well, I can go next door." But yet, guess what? We paid, we paid to bring them here. We paid to teach them and train them and get them adapted to what we're doing in Cabarrus County schools. And they take that to some other district and maybe even use it against us, because it may help their academics go up, and we're trying to get ours to go up. And, but anyway, you know, I don't want to talk as long as Barry did, but, you know, I'm behind this. I'm, I'm, I'm behind it.
You still have time, and you'll still be on.
Yeah. Well, well, you know, I'm, I'm for it, because I, I think that these, you know, it's just, we don't live in the same society that we used to live in. When I was in elementary school, Mr. Swearingen was the principal. He lived to be 100, by the way. He just died within last year. But, you know, it was one principal and one librarian, and that was it. You know, they had four, 500 children, the old A.T. Allen School, but we didn't have the things that we have now. We didn't have all the technology. And, and you've heard me mention this before, kids today in the first grade, they're where I probably was in the third or fourth grade, or fifth grade, because of the, how things are, are being delivered now in the classroom and the technology that helps bring it there. So all in all, you know, it's good, and as a commissioner, I'm gonna do my best, you know, do the best I can. I'll just do the best I can, and that's all I can do. So, that's all I have, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Harrison?
Well, I'm still singing "Stand By Your Man" in my head, I'm, so I can't get over that one. And Ms. Klein, I'm, I'm mad that you left English, but whatever, we'll take that offline. But, you know, you took your skills to a higher level, and that's what everybody in this room ought to do. Everybody's underpaid in some sense or another. And what we pay teachers is a crime in this state, is a sin. But it is what the market bears. It's what the situation is. All my talk in the world is not gonna change the fact that that's what the state pays. Here is where we can incentivize our management-level staff. And Barry, I want to make them more senior-level managers than, than mid-level managers in your analogy there, because here's what's going on in my mind, two basic, some basic economic lessons that go on in my mind. In this recession that we've had, now that we seem to be coming out of it in a long, slow, painful kind of way, people who have skills are looking around and they're saying, "I can take these skills somewhere else, and I'm gonna vote with my feet if where I am is not gonna pay me what I think I can get elsewhere." And that's no less true with our administrative-level people. So they, more so, to some extent or another, what we're dealing with here, Dr. Shepherd, is their mobility. They can pick up, and they can go across the line, and they can make a lot more than they can here. If they choose to jump out of the frying pan into the fire over in Mecklenburg, that's their business, I suppose. Maybe they'll come crying and screaming back to us in some time in the future. But they have a mobility that it's their right to exercise. And we're grateful to the ones, as we say, who, who are willing to stay here despite some of those financial burdens. And as our commissioner-to-be, sitting to my right here, brings up, "This is all based on tax receipts. Cabarrus County is getting some major employers coming into this area. We're going to have jobs in this area. Jobs pay salaries. Salaries have tax rates affixed to them. People take those salaries after they've paid their income tax to the state, and they go out and buy groceries and milk and bread, and that becomes tax money that comes back to the counties, and then they go buy..." And then they go buy properties and cars, which are taxable income to the county as well. And that's how our county commissioners come up with the funds, for the most part, to pay these supplements to any of our teachers and staff. We also seem to be saying here that our principals and assistant principals and the people who run the schools, I tried to make myself a list. I'm sure I'll have something missed here. They seem to be our chief executive officers, our chief financials at the schools, our chief information officers, our chief security officers, at least our paralegal counselors. Maybe they're our head cooks and bottle washers too at each school, but they have so many burdens and responsibilities on them. What's more, Mr. Auerbach said that he has 600, give or take, at his school. Well, that's 600 plus another 600 for each parent, so that's 1,800 immediate customers that you've got. And you've got, I don't know the number of staff or employees at your school, but that's how many people you're managing and dealing with. At Hickory Ridge High School, that becomes, I have to check my math now, 4,800 customers, students and their parents at that school, plus the number of staff, employees at that school to deal with, much less all the vendors that come and go all day long bringing stuff to the school. And our principals and assistant principals have to manage all of those crazy logistics that go on. My hat's off to you. It makes me dizzy to think of the responsibilities that you have, plus the safety, plus the safety. God, what a world we live in. Let that sink in. Thank you for doing what you do. But we've got to work with the county to provide the funds that we can because it don't grow on trees in the backyard. What we are saying here, though, is that this amount, this year, for these, this block of principals and assistant principals, is sustainable now and is, your word earlier was reoccurring, an accounting term that I need to learn some of those, that is sustainable for the near future. But I'm, with all due respect, I'm going to hold you, no, accountable to the, to the basic understanding, at this point at least, that it is sustainable, that it is reoccurring, even though we are trying to get additional funding on top of this in the, in the future. This is what we need to keep the best of our best staff here and to reward them and incentivize them to keep on making this a good school system. And students need that leadership. Teachers need that support in order to make what happens in a school a success. And graduation rates and SAT scores and EOG scores don't just happen. They happen with a great deal of finesse, talent, skill, blood, sweat, and tears from the top of the principals down to everybody in this school dedicating their time and their, a lot of their life to helping our children become good, productive citizens. Did I speak as long as Mr. Schumaker did?
You're good.
No, now, what I'll let up to as well. Thank you for a great plan. Thank you for these reassurances that we can manage this going forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, as long as we're talking about Charlotte Mecklenburg luring away some of our top administrators, I'd like to kind of take this in a different direction. Just before we started this meeting, there was a news flash that Charlotte Mecklenburg has lost their superintendent and will be recruiting a new one. Through you, Mr. Chair, could I ask our superintendent if he has any interest in that job?
Go right ahead.
I am extremely happy and proud to remain as the superintendent of the Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you, sir.
Yes, well, we have it on tape, so you can't back down. All right, well, no. The only thing I'm going to say is, as far as I'm concerned, this action corrects a mistake that was made by our state legislature this summer when they gave other certified staff on average 7 percent raise, and yes, I know that a lot of them didn't get that much, and then gave our principals, our leaders, 0.7 percent. That's just not right. And so by voting for this, I hope to correct that.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And to all of my fellow board members, thank you very much for your impassioned comments on something that is overdue. And I think that one of the things that I'd like to do is thank all of you for being here, Adam and Michelle for presenting, the rest of you for being, you've sat here for three and a half hours, hoping to hear good news when you leave. And, you know, this was the easiest thing you did today. Everything else was harder than this, and it's like that every single day. So we value each and every one of you. We value everyone that does the work that you do that's not sitting here, that's out there. The level of integrity and professionalism in this district is unmatched, and it may sound somewhat cliched, but, you know, the way to get a journey started is to take the first step. And we did hit some of the lower-paid employees earlier. We have been asking, we're going to keep asking. If we can do this, then it certainly makes sense. I was asked recently what innovative ideas that I have about dealing with budget cuts to schools. And I had a very simple answer. The answer was, keep our current finance or officer employed. Period. End of story. To be able to take this and figure out a way to get this done so this board can take this action, we owe a tremendous amount of gratitude to you. So thank you very much for doing that. And without any further discussion, board members, I'd like a motion and a second that the supplement increase for building-level administrators, principals, and assistant principals in full-time, permanent position, retroactive to July 1, 2014, be approved as presented. So move. I have a motion by Mr. Harrison.
Second.
A second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
May I have a point of privilege?
You may.
I would, I am making, I want the minutes to reflect. I am going to go with this, but with, the only thing is, they have promised me they are going to make sure that they do use this as a template to make sure that teachers and other employees will have something like this in place. And I want to make sure that the minutes do reflect this because, again, I do not like to see something, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and this is the only reason that I will go along with this.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, fantastic, board members. Thank you very much. Thank you. Before we move forward, I would like to recognize Deputy Randy Buckwell. He is here for providing security. Was, wasn't here right when the meeting started, so I didn't recognize him, and typically we do. Randy, thank you very much for being here. We greatly appreciate it. And with that, board members, I need, like a motion that we adjourn. I have a motion by Dr. Phillips.
Second.
A second by Mr. Schumaker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is now adjourned.